Because we can learn something from all teachings, no matter what it is. We have something in there we can take away. I need everybody to be muted. So what we're gonna do, as I always do, when you come in and they start coming in and they're gonna present, we always do it, this is the way I always work. Once you come in last, the last go first and the first go last. So we do know that Brother Devon was one of the first ones, he was the first one that came up. So he's going last. So how we're gonna do it? Now, we do have, I wanna see, we have Brother Nick. He's gonna, he's gonna go through here, he gonna go through his presentation, he wrote his on paper, we're gonna present that. And he's gonna explain it, I will ask you questions if we need clarification or sometime what I also do, I also check to make sure that this was not done by parents. So some questions might come and they might come very odd. So what we're gonna do, we're gonna do first up, I do have Nick. And we wanna welcome everybody as Brother Nick to where we're gonna see and we're gonna look at this and we wanna understand what he, what he's saying to where we can get the understanding. So we still need everybody to make sure they have their Bibles to where we can go through and understand what's happening. I'm getting ready to pull my Bible up because everybody has to have their Bible up to make sure that we doing what we supposed to be doing. So let me get my Bible up to where I can make sure I can follow him. And give him a little bit of time and let me get my Bible up, my Bible is up. And let me get set right now, cuz he gonna start at 1 Corinthians 10:3. So let me get over there first. And we're gonna let him. So what I'm getting ready to do now, Brother Nick, I'm getting ready, I'm getting ready to pull yours up, put yours up on the screen and I'm gonna give you the floor. And I need everybody, everybody's muted, you're up. And I wanna welcome everybody to welcome Brother Nick to where he's gonna explain to us what, what is meat. So Brother Nick, if you can go ahead, you had a floor. So, 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 so here, we have, what is meat? So we all, it says, and all did eat that same spiritual meat. So here, you explaining what part of it? The what? Yeah, so here, you explaining what part of it? You're displaying carnal meat or displaying the carnal side of meat? The which one? Okay, so with the spiritual meat, so what is that spiritual meat? So, 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 he, so here, it's saying the most high as spiritual meat? Okay, so what we're gonna do? We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna look at this and see what's going on. So, so like with this spiritual meat here, it's the laws of the spiritual meat. Now, what made you go to 1 Corinthians 10:3 first? Okay. Yeah, so, so, so here, what we're gonna understand and then you have, cuz we're gonna, we're gonna tie all this in. But what I'm trying to do, I'm looking at where you have Exodus 20. And I'm trying to see, it says who Moses gave. And Moses, and Moses gave to our people, but the laws of the most high. So you doing on this more, more trying to do a spiritual side to see why so our people will live, uh, live the way he wants us to. So with the spiritual meat, is, is you saying more so this is a spiritual feeding? And that the only part we have to watch, I'm gonna show you something in, in, in this, in 1 Corinthians. We're still looking at 1 Corinthians. And I'm gonna show you, I'm gonna show you where it gets, where it gets real dangerous and real hairy in here. So if everybody look at 1 Corinthians 10:3, it says, "And all did eat that same spiritual meat." The dangerous part about this is what he's talking about, what happened. Because here, when they all ate that same spiritual meat, that's talking about the manner that came down. And that's the spiritual, what he was trying to get us to see was the spiritual side on what was coming down, because soon as he said they say ate that same spiritual meat, he was talking about the manner that was being rained down to which they was eating every day. And then on the Sabbath day, no, no, no manner rain down. So this is a spiritual way you can see it, we're just saying the same spiritual meat, meaning just, oh, but he was, as he was feeding them this, he was showing them on the Sabbath day. That's what he was mainly trying to force it out. That's what, that's what he was trying to make sure we understood. And then when you look at the other part of the spiritual side, and you'll see in other areas, it'll start talking about meat. To where we are starting to understand it, it's just talking about, it's talking about the laws and everything else. So even though that this is a good explanation, we still need to understand exactly what meat is. So, so if you ask of a friend of yours, ask you, what is meat? This, this scripture here would not be a good scripture to run them to, to make them, make sure that they understand because now you're gonna start having to explain a lot of the scriptures to make them understand what meat is. We wanna make sure they know exactly what meat is. So once we go through it, it won't be no, it won't be no, no explanations needed as you say in the scriptures. Yeah, okay, okay, actually I'm gonna come back, cuz I hear a lot of background noise on your. So what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna come, I'm gonna come back to you. But what we're gonna do, uh, let me see, one second. Hi, yeah, I need you muted, I need everybody muted. This is, yeah, I need everybody muted. Yeah, everybody muted, parents, make sure your kids are muted. Okay. So what we're gonna do, we're gonna go to the next one. We have Kinesia. And she goes by Kiki, I'm getting ready to pull hers up, one second. She actually has a presentation which she's gonna show us. And what I'm gonna do, um, who, wait a minute, is somebody else is staying unmuted, I need everybody muted. The only one I'm gonna want unmuted is the one person. I do not see.
It's Sister Cheryl.
Yeah, Sister Cheryl, I need you to stay muted, yeah. I need you to stay muted. Okay, uh, what I'm gonna do? Yeah. Let me get this here, one second, okay, I got that. And what I'm gonna do? See, I could, if I run it, if I run it in the PowerPoint format, it'd actually make it to where I can't, where I can't see what's going on. So what I'm gonna do? I'm going to, uh, have Sister Kinesia, Sister Kiki, I need you to unmute. And what we're gonna do, I still could probably run it. I'm gonna, I'm gonna check it, I'm gonna see if I can still run it. Let me see, we can still probably run it.
Yeah, but she still has it on her, on her phone, on her PowerPoint.
No, 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 cuz I'm gonna run it for this.
Okay.
Me and her, we good. Okay. I'm trying to see. What screen do y'all see?
This is meat, Kinesia.
Okay, that's the one I want you to be on, okay. So. Yeah, so only Kinesia, oh, she'll be the only one on mic. So, Kiki, so right now, the floor is yours. Okay, I wanna listen, I might stop you here and there, but I do wanna hear your presentation. So I can go through your entire presentation and then I can ask you questions later or we can go through it as we go. How do you want me, you want me to go through your entire presentation, then, then if I have any question, I can ask you later?
Uh, you can do that.
Okay, we'll do it that way. So right now, the floor is yours.
Let me read, uh, you want me to read the slides or?
Yeah, you gonna, yeah, this is your slide, it's not my slides, this is your slide, so you, you have to explain this for me.
Okay. The first slide says, meat on a carnal level defined as nourishment for the body. Getting to the core of a story, or you can chew meat and spit out the bones. Meaning you just want the main parts for nourishment.
Wait, wait, one second, let me just, do you want it on this page?
The next slide.
Yeah, 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 and, and my thing is, just tell me when you want the slide to change, just say, hey, move the slide and I'm good. So, okay, so can you start over again, I'm sorry?
Meat on a carnal level defined as nourishment for the body. Getting to the core of a story, or you can chew the meat and spit out the bones. Meaning you just want the main parts for nourishment. Uh, the next slide, please. Celestial definition is that following nourishment on the ministry of the whole doctrine. On the next slide. And not holding the head from with all the bodies by joints and bands, having nourishment, ministry and knit together increases with the increase of God. Next slide. And God said, behold, I have given you every herb bearing seed, which is upon the face of all the earth and every tree, and which the fruit of a tree yielding seed to you who shall be meat. Next slide. On the other side of the flames, not wasted, not the flesh of the corruptible living things, though they walk through, neither melt with they, the icy kind of heavenly meat that was a nature apt to milk. Next slide. But afterward, they saw a new generation of following, when being led with their appetite, they act delicate means. Last slide. The new generation, us, will lead Israel black people that have been scattered across the four corners of the earth, our rightful throne, the very nourish nutrition doctrine.
Oh, wait a minute, oh, that's all the slides. So, Kinesia, what we're gonna do, we're gonna go back, I do thank you for your presentation.
You're welcome.
And, and what I wanna do, look at the carnal terms. And I'm gonna tell you what I do like what you did, did do. Because all the terms, this is what people believe meat is. And me, verse in the Bible, meat is talking about bread. So here, you did this beautifully. And then another thing, what you could've did on the next page, you could've showed to which the showing verse in the Bible, the Bible shows meat as bread. So clearly, this is the carnal side of meat, which is the nourishment. And then we have here, where we have celestial, the definition in the following nourishment is of a, is a ministry of the whole doctrine. Now, when you do this, we don't never wanna tell people what it is and just give them what we think. You need some verses to back that up.
Okay.
That's your key. Cuz here, I can easily come at you and then I can challenge you. So if I'm a friend of yours, I can constantly just challenge you, challenge. Because all you, you giving me what you believe the definition is, not, you're not letting the word speak for you. You gotta always let the word speak for you to where you can give these definitions. Cuz here, right when you put celestial definition, and there's no verse backing it up, that's what opens you up. Opens you up to where people can come at you, that's what you don't want. We're gonna look at here, we got this old bubble head guy here, and, uh, on there, and, uh, I appreciate, but then it's saying, um, now seeing hole in the head and then the, the whole body and joints and bands together and nourishment meet ministers and knit together. Now, the same thing is what it's doing, where you, we, we pulling everything in, is where you kinda honing in on everything. This here, you always wanna back that up with at least two scriptures. Always, you gonna back it up, always two scriptures. And, and also too, see, I see, uh, you gonna do a lot of visuals, which is extremely good. And that's where I need to really see, cuz I'm so into doctrine, a lot, I don't forget to do that. So, you know, so I know a lot of you guys watch me, but I do apologize, and the reason why I apologize, cuz I don't do this a lot. But this, when you get visuals, you get better understanding. So I do know that and I do know this, well, pretty much all, 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 all the, all the young adults have done this already. And you get understanding a lot better, so you guys did very well there. Cuz actually, I'm pretty, I'm pretty much all of them did it. And you can kinda get it cuz you can get a visual. But then here, uh, this one here, Genesis 1:29, I will use that one first. You would've nailed, you would've nailed some stuff down as the way you had your presentation set up. This the one you would've set it up as, because this, this one telling you, and I'm gonna ask you the question, is this telling you celestial or is this a carnal?
Um, I think this is carnal.
No, see, that's celestial. That's why I said I would've used that one first. Cuz it's telling you right here, it's telling you right here, it says, that's what, behold, I have given you every herb bearing seed, which is upon the face of the earth, in every tree, which, which is a fruit of the tree, yielding seed, and it, and it should, to you, it should be for me. And then I learned about, you put nourishment, you making sure, and that's what I did love as I went through your entire presentation, as I'm, as I'm looking at where you giving it, you making sure, you making sure we understand, this is nourishment, this is nourishment. So we have some that gonna be nourishment of the flesh, we got some gonna be nourishment of the spirit, beautifully done. So I don't know, now, now, did you put that in there or did you have someone help you, tell you to put that in there?
Uh, my mama helped me with a little bit of it, but I did. So that's on my side.
So, yeah, but, but, but who made the suggestion to put nourishment in there?
Um, myself.
Yeah, smart. See, cuz what you doing, I can go back. And you see right here, see you got nourishment here? You see nourishment? You starting off, you starting off clearly with nourishment, so that's what you pounding. See, this, see, this is, this was your focal point in, that you using. And it's pounding it into us. Letting you know, this is nourishment, it's clear. So anywhere I go, and now I'm looking at meat, I'm knowing what is nourishment. Either gonna speed, feed me spiritually or it gonna speed, feed, feed me fleshly. It's gonna be the one and two, it's nourishment, smart move. But then when you do this, that's how you hone into it, but everywhere where you did this, you made sure we knew what it was. That was a smart move, I, so I give a lot of credit for that. And, and, uh, let's go to this, wisdom of Solomon. Now, this is the one we're trying to understand, so the same thing. It says icy kinds of heavenly meat to you again, went right to nourishment, you honed, so you honed in on this, which is good. Now, this one here, I always need a couple of other verses to actually prove what it's saying. The reason why, because Solomon is a heavy dude. And he, and he speaks, majority of time, he speak in a, in a spiritual way, which he gonna start speaking parabolic. Many times, this is all he does. That's why it says on, it says, "And other side flames wasted not the flesh of the corruptible living thing." See, right there, he just flipped the script on everybody. Most people are not gonna understand what's going on. Now, what you got here, I completely understand why you got it here. But a lot of people are not gonna understand it. So that's why sometimes it's good to use other verses to back this up or sometime with wisdom of Solomon, if he's talking completely spiritually and say if you wanted to present this before some of your friends, I wouldn't even use Solomon. Cuz they're not gonna get Solomon, especially if they knew to it. Cuz it's saying neither melt in the icy kinds of heavenly meat, that done threw them all, that done threw them all together. Even though you got nourishment there, but they gonna try, but you gonna have to explain yourself to why it's there. It says, "Nature apt to melt." See, all that, they don't, they not gonna get none of that. I completely get why you got it there. So, you know, and now, with this one here, me personally, I would use this. But the only thing is, you had to use a couple of other verses to back yourself up. Yeah, you had to put a couple of other, you have used some precepts to explain that. Because the first thing is, cuz what happened? People gonna, they gonna get flames wasted, not, not the flesh. Not only not gonna get that, uh, corruptible living things, they should get it, but they not. See, corruptible living things, we know everything corruptible living, when he talking about corruptible living things, I'm talking about you can go from food, you can nail people to the cross on that one. I'm talking about, you can living, corruptible living thing, you can go in Leviticus 11 and beat, and beat anybody up with this verse impaired to that. Cuz all you gotta do is use one or two, but you can beat somebody up really on that and they can't get around it. So it's, then it says, "Though they walked therein, neither melt their icy kinds of heavenly meat." So all this here, you can, you can tie people into something and you can tear them down. You can tear down any doctrine with this, but when you use him and then you use him by himself, most people are not gonna get it, so then what they gonna do, they gonna say, well, to me, I see this. Or to me, it says that, and you don't want that. You wanna show them the precepts of it on what the most high is saying. You don't wanna speak for the most high, let the most high speak for himself, you don't need help. So once you do that, you'll be, you'll be to nail them down on that one. One, I will use the verse, but then you just need a couple of other verses to back you up. Okay? And this here, the same thing, uh, you have wisdom of Solomon, I see you, you, it seemed like, it seemed like, uh, you like to go on wisdom of Solomon, which is extremely good. But then always as you go through wisdom of Solomon, start understanding what he's saying and what we're gonna do even today. We're gonna look at some spiritual words and I'm gonna show you how to flip them. Basically, I'm thinking I'm being hip, so, yeah, I know a lot of y'all kids gonna correct me, but I think flipping it, y'all get it, I'm gonna turn it around another way. Trying to, trying to speak young, but I don't know. But, uh, but it says, but afterwards, I saw a new generation of files, "When being led with their appetite, they ask delicate meats." See, now here, he flipped this so hard, it's unreal, because he said, and, and they ask delicate meat. So right here, it's there still talking about nourishment, but it's feeding them spiritually because this is what they looking for. This is what I'm saying. So when you go into wisdom of Solomon, you had to flip it around. And you had to show other precepts to show, to, 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 to show what he's saying. Cuz if not, most people ain't gonna get wisdom of Solomon. Let alone going to the songs of Solomon, they're not gonna get it. But beautiful things, beautiful, beautiful, beautifully the way you laid it out. And then here, and then it got a Kinesia thoughts, and, um, new generation, us, will be led, uh, will, will lead Israel black people, good. And, and, uh, that have been scattered across the four corners of the earth, of the earth, our rightful throne with the very nourishment, the very nourish nutrients doctrine of Yah, beautifully written. So, 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 cuz this is the only way we can get back. That's it, and we have to be nourished with the word of God, so you did this perfectly, it's very, 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 very good done. We're gonna look at, uh, one second. We gotta adjust this resolution, one second, uh, let me stop sharing. And we have Sister Kim, I wonder why yours had this showed up? We have Sister Kim. And I wanna share hers, I wanna share hers, and then I'm gonna share the screen. There you go, so it's in here, one second. Okay. Sister Kim on mic, and we waiting on you.
Okay. Meat in carnal terms and celestial terms. Meat in carnal terms. Meat in carnal terms is the most nutritious thing of all the food goods that you can eat. It has proteins and healing properties. Meat in celestial terms. Meat in celestial terms is the most holy offering to the higher, it give you favor and salvation. He said, um, Levius 2:3, "The maid of meat offering shall be Aaron's and his sons. It is a thing most holy of the offering to the Lord made by fire." 2 Maccabees 2:11, Moses said, "Because the sin meat offering was not to be eaten, it was consumed." Hebrews 10:10, "By which we are sanctified,
sanctified."
Sanctified through the offering of the body of Jesus Christ once and for all.
So now with yours, I see you, uh, you do more give dialogue before you start showing precepts. My thing is, we'll go right here. And we give meat in carnal terms. Put the verse below it, now I'm gonna tell you. I don't, I don't think, I don't think you and Kiki work together, but if y'all would've, actually, y'all would've been actually very dangerous. I don't, I don't think, I don't think you and Kiki work together, but if y'all would've, actually, y'all would've been actually very dangerous. What I'm saying in a good way, reason why, because even the way you explaining yourself, I get it. And I'm probably pretty sure most of the parents get it. I would've put a verse, cause soon you said meat in carnal terms is nutritious things of all food groups that you, that you can eat. It has proteins and properties. If you would've put Genesis one twenty-nine there, you would've shut this whole thing down.
Thank you.
And see, and then your sister was sitting there explaining thing and she had the verses there, so that's why I say. It would've been good to, 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 to sit with her and kinda see what she doing. Because you, you writing it out, you saying meat in celestial terms is the most holy offering to, to Yahweh. Favor and salvation. Now, I could sit there and we could talk about that part all day. How? Because a celestial term, okay, as he feeds us with the spiritual meat, that, that's what his word. So as you sitting there saying that, it brings you favor and salvation, because with the knowledge of the most high. With the knowledge of the most high, it does both. So
Okay.
So, and then this, the same thing, as you was explaining this, actually, I even used that verse yesterday. This is how you make your election sure. You could've used that verse, right there in second Peter.
Okay.
Cause you wanna make sure meat in celestial terms, cause now when you start saying it's celestial terms, you wanna, you don't wanna speak nothing of what people trying to ingest as, as um, satisfying the flesh. Everything's satisfying the spirit, that's why you using this. But then, you know, as you go right here, and now you saying, you know, the, the, the remnant of meat offering shall, you know, should be, should be Aaron and, and his sons and all that. These here, some of these, some of these verses here, I wouldn't have used, because some of these here will still mix up some people. This, um, the, um, the remnant of the meat offering shall be Aaron's and his sons. It should be the most holy offering that's made by fire. Most people still gonna wanna understand what is meat. They still wanna, gonna wanna understand what is meat, because when you look back, uh, let me see, I'm gonna go back. Okay, carnal term, so that's why it has to be back over here. Because now, I'm just finding out all this here. So now, I can get mixed up, but if you show me, as you told me what it was, then you show it to me, then I can get it better. And then we see in second Maccabees, it says Moses said, because the sin meat offering was not to be eaten, it, it was consumed. So the main thing is, you still need to know what that was. And the main thing is talking about, we know it's talking about this here where it had to be consumed, we know it's talking about bread, it's not talking about no flesh. This, this is why we always wanna understand what's going on here. This is, this is why we have to make sure we hold on to it. And then, from the one you closing out with, it's Hebrews ten, ten, which, which uh, by which we will, we will be sanctified through the offering of the body of Christ once and for all. That's a beautiful part to, to end with, but you want to make sure that you end with it, when it would've been right in here. And it's, and it's telling you what it is, because he said, could, could, when you use this verse here, Hebrews ten, ten. He said that his body is meat indeed. That's what you have to use with that to back this up. He actually says that, he actually tells you that you have to drink his blood and eat of his body, but he also talks about that his body is meat indeed. He actually says this, so when, when you see that, you have to make sure you back that up. Okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we gonna go, uh, one second. We gonna go through, and I need Anthony. Uh, one second, Anthony, I need you to unmute.
Yes, sir.
Alright, so, we gonna go through yours. And this is switching up right now. Okay. Brother Anthony, you are up.
The spiritual, uh, I think scriptures, in Romans twenty, twenty. All the trees, thou knows, they be not trees for meat. Thou shalt be for a dog, and thou shalt be bulwarks against the city, and make war with thee until it be succeeded. Uh, I think, uh, second verse, nine, six, so I went my way to the third in this card. I, our God, like, as he commanded me, there I set him on the flowers, and he came to the field.
Okay. Yeah, wanna tell you what, one second, let me see about this, let me, let me see if I can straighten that part out for you, cause see, uh, one second. Cause I see it's, uh, let me go over there.
Sir, couldn't hear you.
Now, I was trying to, uh, I need to, uh, I was gonna, I was gonna adjust that image, so you can, uh, see it, now, now let me go back.
Do I read it again, sir?
Yeah, now, now you can finish it out, but that's what everybody, everybody.
Sir, I can barely, I can barely hear you.
Yeah, now it's just, uh-oh, wanna tell you what, that's, can you hear me now, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Yeah, that's what, I don't know why some people, and I had, had the mic off, had the mic laying down. So, yeah, so now they can see it says in meat, uh, in the meat of the same satisfied me. Okay.
Uh, next slide please, okay. Uh, meat in the Bible can be changed with the word knowledge, as it does, as does water in very many scriptures. But meat can also mean what it sounds like, food, with food being the current meaning. For example, place meat for knowledge in Judges fourteen, fourteen. Next slide please. And he said, to them, out of the eater came forth meat, and out of the strong came forth sweetness, and they cannot in three days expound the river. This good food eater could be Israelite gathering and digesting or learning food, which, which food would be changed out for meat. Knowledge.
I'm gonna tell you. You're a dangerous man.
That was beautifully done.
You're a dangerous man.
Thank you, sir.
I'm gonna tell you, I'm gonna tell you why. These here, um, beautiful scriptures, Ren. I'm gonna tell you right now, I wouldn't have never even thought to use Sampson.
Thank you, patience.
It never crossed my, boy, I'm gonna tell you, you nailed this down to the cross. Cause what you did, what you did, you set us up beautifully. When you, when you put this right here, meat in the Bible can be interchanged with the word knowledge, as does water in many, in very many scriptures, but meat can also mean what it sounds like food. That's where you did, that's where you set me up. And then you said, for example, to replace meat for knowledge, and you use Judges fourteen, fourteen. Now, my question is this. Who did? Who did this?
I did it on my line.
You're a dangerous man. That's in a good way.
Thank you.
You a dangerous man, uh, literally, um, you flipped this actually so tight, you know, in a, in a, in, in, actually, wanna tell you what? I can't say anything, cause I'm going back, I want to see what you gonna do to carnal side, but you just saying the spiritual side of meat, and that's what you actually explained. You nailed this down to the cross, so, and I'm telling you, you used a verse, uh, as I said, we all learned something. I wouldn't have never even thought to go to, to Judges, that would, that wouldn't even cross my mind. And you actually used that verse, and you actually, and, and, and I know this right here is a riddle from Moses, I mean, a riddle from Sampson. Cause that's who it was from, and uh, yeah, and he, and he actually, he actually had him caught up. It says, in this scripture, the eater could be an Israelite gathering and digesting, learning, learning food, which you change out for knowledge. And that knowledge that he had, it took him seven days and they still couldn't figure it out. Cause that, that knowledge that he dropped, they could not figure out what it was. Brother Anthony, I take my hat off to you.
Yes, sir.
Alright, uh, man, that, that, that's good, that was good. Uh, why is my mouse never going on that side? Let me see, it don't wanna go over there for some reason, I don't know why, but now we got the first one who was up, we gotta go to uh, brother, uh, brother Anthony, I mean, uh, brother Devon, let me put you up, brother Devon. Uh, let me, let me close that, let me close that, let me close out some of these other ones. Yeah. Let me delete this out. And let me put you up, and then we have the last one up, is brother Devon. As we said, the first will be last and last will be first. So we got brother Devon. And brother Devon, you are up.
Shalom, Elder Johnson. My name is Devon White, and I'm with the Lawship of Israel. So let me start, what is the meaning of meat by Devon White? Next slide. The meaning of meat is knowledge, and knowledge is the truth, dark sayings, terrible, as a mystery of the Bible. So as you can see, I have a picture of a person that has white balls going inside of their head, and a black kid reading the Bible. So, the first picture shows the person having ideas of what a precepting is really about. And then the second picture shows that the, uh, uh, kid is really excited. Well, the Israel kid is really excited for learning how to precept.
Okay.
Next slide. Here are the precepts that I found, uh, tell, tell me find the meaning of meat. So Hebrews five, fourteen reads, but strong knowledge belongs to them that are full age. Even those who by reason of youth have their senses exercised.
I have to stop. Hold it, I have to stop you for one second. Did all these, did y'all parents just see what this, what this guy did?
Yes, I did.
Make me cry. See what this dude did.
That is awesome.
Man, you finna make me cry in here, uh. You, you, you kinda left me, I'm gonna have to finish out too, wait a minute. Go ahead, go.
Oh, my gosh.
Go ahead, go, 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 go ahead, Devon, go ahead, go, just go ahead, my friend.
They have their senses exercised to discern both good and evil. Now, moving on to Ezekiel sixteen and nineteen, that reads, my knowledge also which I gave thee, anointed in oil and honey, wherewith I fed thee. Thou hast even sent it before them for a sweet savor, and thus it was saith the Lord God. Now Ezekiel forty-two and twelve reads, and by the river upon the bank thereof, on this side and on that side shall grow all trees for knowledge. Whose leaf shall not fade, neither shall the fruit thereof be.
Hold it, hold it, hold it, one second. Are y'all seeing how this kid flipping this stuff?
Yes, we do.
Put me to shame, wow.
You know, you see, he's not reading this carnally.
I'm telling you, it bring tears to my eyes right now, oh my gosh.
That's baby Moses over there, he's taking your spot, Elder.
You ain't never lied there. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, brother Devon, I, man, you, cause I'm telling you, you literally getting, you tearing me down. You attempt, you almost got me crying.
Yes, sir.
Got me crying, uh.
Yes, hold on.
Yeah, yeah, go, go, go ahead, go ahead.
It makes me so proud.
Yeah, 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 let me, yeah, let me, let me, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead, my brother.
Whose leaf shall not fade, neither shall the fruit thereof be consumed. It shall bring forth new fruit according to his months, because their waters they issued out of the sanctuary. And the fruit thereof shall be for knowledge, and the leaf thereof for medicine. Next slide. Now, here is where I get to the kernel meanings and the spiritual meanings. Now, the kernel meaning for Leviticus two and one reads, and when the law, and when any will offer a meat offering unto the Lord, whose offering shall be a fine flour. And he shall pour oil upon it and put fragrance thereon. Now, the spiritual meaning for Leviticus two and one is, and when any will offer a knowledge offering until the Yahweh offering shall be of first fruits, or you could say the best. And he shall pour anointed oil upon it and put sweet savor thereon.
Now, hold it right there. He flipped this so hard, I'm gonna show you something, I, y'all have to see this. When you offer these offerings to the most high, you have to have knowledge of what you did wrong, is why you offering it. And this is his writings down here at the bottom, so he flipped this, and it says, and when you offer a knowledge offering, you acknowledging what you have done to the most high, this is how, this is flipped. Offering shall be the first fruits, and he's telling you, it has to be the best. He literally giving you the spiritual meaning of what Leviticus two and one actually is saying. Because, as I said, and I'm gonna tell you what would've been most dangerous, if he would've put, um, uh, Hebrews ten, twenty-six, after we come to the knowledge of the truth, if, if we willfully send, we come to the knowledge of the truth, there is no more sacrifice. He's telling, this, he's telling you exactly what it is. Cause once you had that knowledge, this is when you do it, cause you recognize what you doing wrong. And he's telling you already the spiritual side, oh, what, cause this is what you do, this is why you offering it, cause why? Cause you had knowledge of what you did wrong. Go ahead, my brother, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
Yes, sir, keep moving to the next slide. Now, the kernel meaning for Leviticus two and four reads, and if thou bring an oblation of a meat offering baked in the oven, it shall be unleavened cakes of fine flour mingled with oil, or unleavened wafers anointed with oil. Now, the spiritual meaning for Leviticus two and four reads, and if thou bring an offering of a knowledge offering baked in the oven, it shall be without sin cakes of first fruits or the best mingled with anointed oil, or without sin wafers anointed with oil. Next slide. Now, Leviticus two and five, the kernel meaning for that one reads, and if thy oblation be a meat offering baked in the pan, it shall be a fine flour unleavened mingled with oil. Now, the spiritual meaning for Leviticus two and five reads, and if thy o- offering be a knowledge offering baked in the pan. It shall be of first fruits or the best without sin mingled with oil. Next slide.
That was it. I had the right one, or was it another one?
Oh, uh, that's good, that's, uh, what it all, what it was.
Ain't nothing I can say.
We all dumb here, oh my gosh.
Shut us all down, huh?
He didn't, he didn't shut a whole bunch of stuff down.
Thank you, brother Tommy.
Yeah.
I'm proud of you Devon.
Thank you, Sister Carly.
Good job, your dad is probably, I mean, I know he's gotta be overjoyed with joy.
Yes, ma'am.
Man.
We gonna call you baby Moses from here out.
Yeah, uh, my question is this. What made you start flipping the spiritual meaning and you, and you, and you started this? You're literally just programming it to where the spiritual meaning, what it was saying.
So like when, like when you read it the regular meaning, it, uh, really doesn't, uh, sound, uh, like if you're really saying it. Like, like Yahweh wants you to put it, so that's how I hooked it around and changed it like how it was supposed to be.
You are a dangerous.
Oh my gosh. Oh my gosh.
You are a dangerous kid, cause, uh. I wanna ask you a couple of questions, so when you, so when you read. Leviticus, we got two and four still showing. Do it read normal to you, or do it, do it, or do it make more sense the way you see it in the spiritual meaning?
Makes more sense when I read it in the spiritual meaning, so that I know what I'm saying, the words, actually know what the meaning of the words are.
I'm gonna tell you something, my brother. I'm gonna show you something, cause I, I have to, I'm, actually, I might, might have to talk to you off, offline. So, 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 so when you read, so when you read many scriptures, do you see it, do it make sense to you in carnal sense, or make more sense to you in spiritual sense?
It makes more sense in spiritual meaning.
Yeah, 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 you're a dangerous kid, I'm gonna tell you something. Cause, um, actually, how you coming off is almost the same way, so same thing like with, um. I wanna go to the same thing. To say like with this Ezekiel.
Yes, sir.
When you sitting there, you seeing this, and, and, and you seeing the trees and everything else. And for me, and this is, seeing the meat for knowledge, see, I'm gonna tell you what I do, I, I love about what you did. When you, when you putting this here, you focusing in on this knowledge here. That's what you focusing in on, cause that's what was asked of you to do. What I want you to start doing, and I'm, I'm, I'm gonna start leaning on you for, and I gotta do it for a reason. When you knowing the spiritual side of what that is, seeing we already know what it is, I'm gonna start wanting you to flip all of it. Because this is literally talking about spirits, this is talking about, this is talking about people who. Who has that knowledge, so those are spirits that's doing that.
Yes, sir.
Start having you to flip that all, so besides honing in on what's being asked of you, I'm gonna have you to flip it all. Because I think, cause I think it's something real different about you, to which, um. Is actually very good, it's extremely, extremely good. Yes.
Can I tell you the spiritual meaning of tree?
Yeah.
Uh, the spiritual meaning of tree equals people.
Mm-hmm. Oh, yeah. Yeah, that's what it is. That is clearly what it is, there's no, there's no argument there, so. You know, so now, your dad now, your dad is showing you guys some, I'm talking about. He, man, he showing you guys some solid stuff and, and you running off to, you running off to a direction. To where, um. The most high feeding you this stuff.
Oh, the Johnson?
Yeah.
Yeah, I hear the Johnsons real quick, um. With Anthony, I never got a chance to see his homework because he's getting up at the last minute. And I was a bit concerned, but that concern is completely gone.
Anthony, Anthony didn't have no issues.
Yeah, completely gone. Devon, I actually explained it to him and he got off the phone with you. He kept telling me, you asked him, do you understand what I'm saying to you about having the verses internal and then changing to spiritual? And he kept saying to you, yes, I understand, so when he got off the phone with you, I said, Devon, don't tell elder you understand. If you don't understand, but he did.
I tell you what. He completely understood, cause he explained it.
Right.
You see, I'm talking about, when you have a kid can, and how old are you Devon, see, cause now that's throwing me off again, how old are you Devon?
Ten.
This don't even make common sense, dude. Uh, this literally don't make common sense. When you have a kid can sit there and explain to you this verse. What the spiritual meaning of it is, see, and the main thing is, the reason why it's so, why it's so trippy. Even when I read the Bible and I read it in, in a carnal sense, it actually makes no sense to me. None. This is why I'm asking you those questions, cause it don't make no sense to me, it makes more sense to me in the spiritual sense. That's literally all this, all this breaking down to. He's, he's not seeing the carnal sense of it, it, it don't make sense, so what it does, it'll make you have to break it down, make you have to precept to get the understanding. That's why they do that, that's what the Bible does, when you see it in the spiritual side, the kid is not understanding, so he has to find something else to tie to it, to make sure he can get it. That's what it's doing.
Yes, sir, thank you.
So, so, and he's ten years old, this makes no common sense. No common sense. So, yeah, so, so, um, so the same thing is, is, uh, literally, uh. Man, it. He literally, I, I, it's, it's nothing far as, um. I'm going through it. To, um, to show you. The only thing I say is, use all the same size fonts, when you, when you, when you put it up.
Yes, sir.
All the same, embol your stuff, that's pretty much, that'd be it, cause you explained this perfectly. Went through it perfectly, you, you.
I'm trying to work on it, but it didn't work.
Yeah, that's okay, uh. You, you did a beautiful job, you actually, you broke this down, uh, the meaning of knowledge. And the knowledge, uh, is, is a truth, dark sayings, parable, mysteries of the Bible, I'm talking about, you literally broke this down. You literally broke that down, so it's nothing I can say there, cause there, literally, that's what it is. It's dark saying, parables and mysteries in the Bible, literally what it is. And, and see, and, and this is what I was trying to get and you, you literally explained it. So it took away all, all things away from it, so, yeah, so, so now with this, um. As I'm going through it, I don't see no, I don't see, uh, no other way to where, um. I'm gonna have to get you guys' address because this was here, this one here was the best presentation. Of what meat is, because actually, I don't think any parent, if any parent can sit there and say that they didn't quite understand. Still what meat is, because he gave you the carnal sense, which is, it tells you right even here. I got it on, uh, Leviticus two, five, he telling you actually what it is, but then he still, and he, this is the crazy part, he breaks it down into the spiritual sense right off the bat. Anything offering be, uh, uh, be a knowledge, so he's telling you what it is. Cause that's all, that's all meat is, so. The, 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 the way I see it is, um. For this one here, this, 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 this presentation right here has the tablet. That's the way I see it, and if, uh, somebody ejected that, or they don't think he should have it. And another one's better, yeah, I can, I give you, I, I open the floor up right now, but other than that, that's where I see the tablet is going.
Thank you.
Yeah, so. Yeah, yeah, so you.
Good job, all of y'all, Israel.
Yeah, all y'all.
Great job, guys.
Yeah, everybody did a wonderful job, I mean, love it, love it, love it.
Good job, y'all.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, all y'all did a wonderful job, so all of y'all did a good job, it's not. Yeah, but it's, but it, but I think, uh, what Devon doing, Devon is taking that extra step. To stay ahead, and this is, and this is where I almost go back into where I tell the kids, almost like, um, when you do basketball. Where you see kids there, look at, uh, uh, Kobe Bryant and, and, uh, Michael Jordan now. And they're trying to sit there, why are they so good at doing something? But after practice, all the other kids will go play, but Jordan must keep there, Jordan must stay there and keep shooting around. So that's what they do, you know, same thing, um, I even tell some people about my son, Michael, who was, uh, he was a, he was a triple jumper. And they were trying to figure out how he was the number one triple jumper, but he'd go, in the morning, he had practiced. Then he had practiced with the team, and then when the team finished practicing, he'd go practice again. And then practice on his own, so it just depend on what type of effort you put in, you see, you put in the right effort, you see what the effort comes out of it. The most high works with you because literally, he's working with this kid, yeah, seeing all the kids he's working with. But when you putting in that extra effort, he's, he's showing you that extra effort, what happens. So, that's a, that's a beautiful thing, and what we're gonna do, uh. Actually, well, we actually have, um, actually, it's really kinda over, but what I wanna do. I wanna set up for, for next week, what I wanna do with, uh, all the kids, we're gonna go through, we're gonna go through some Bible word meanings. And what I want you guys to understand is, I'm actually, I'm gonna pull up a couple of words right now. I wanna get set for, and, um. I wanna see what you guys gonna do based on these, and what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna give you the words on what they mean. How they structured, and actually, I'm gonna need the, um. I'm gonna need the, uh, the spiritual side and the carnal side of it. But I'm gonna give you, I'm gonna show you what it is and what it means, but later. I'm gonna need you just to help me tie to it to where we can understand it. So we gonna know what the spiritual side mean, we gonna know what the carnal side mean. But then later on, I'm gonna have you to show me to tie to it, that's all we're gonna be doing. To where we're gonna be able to, where, where we're gonna be able to, uh, do many things from that point. Now, some people gonna, some people gonna have some issues, some are not. And I think one of the signs is, I don't think, uh, a couple of y'all is gonna have any problem. Cause what I'm getting ready to do, I'm getting ready to share my screen right now. And we gonna look at a couple of these words. And let me go to here. In desktop two. Why it's doing it that way? And, okay, so what we gonna do, we're gonna look at, we're gonna look at Abel. So what we wanna do, we're gonna look at Abel. And you know Abel, you can pull it in, you can see Genesis four two, so most of you guys gonna be able to look and pull it up right automatically, pull up Abel. And we're gonna, we're gonna look at the whole chapter. And we gonna see right there where it says, in, 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 uh, verse one, it says, Adam knew his wife, and she conceived and bare Cain. And said, I have gotten a man from Yahweh, that's clearly what's being said, but now something happened. Right immediately in verse two, it don't say, and Adam knew his wife Eve again. You see right there, it says, and she again bared his, his brother Abel. So now we do know clearly saying in scripture, because one verse followed the other, is showing that Cain and Abel was twins. It don't say twins in here, as well, as you can look at, um, uh, Jacob and Esau, it don't say twins. But it tells you at the beginning, but once, once they bared them, it just tells you the difference on what they are. But you see right here, it says, and Abel was a keeper of sheep, but Cain was a tiller of the ground. But we gonna focus in on Abel. We wanna know what Abel means and what he's about. So spiritual side, we wanna look at a few things, we wanna look at four two, which is telling you, this is actually talking about a person. But now we wanna also, also understand spiritually what it also means. That's what we gotta find out, so we gonna, so we gonna look at that one, and we only got a few other ones. I'm trying to get. Uh, one second. If I can get this. Now, okay. So we wanna know exactly what's going on there. And, um. There's another one that I wanna pull. And let me see, do everybody know what a bee mean? Or bee?
No, sir.
Okay, let me see. Wait a second. We gonna pull that one down. One second. Wonder why it says it that way? Do y'all see, do y'all see the King James Bible on there, or what do y'all see? Okay, did y'all, did y'all see the King James Bible on the last one, cause it's showing differently?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so the last one showed the King James Bible? Cause it's showing, like it was showing a word or something. Did it show the King James Bible on, 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 uh, Abel?
Yes, sir.
Hmm. My screen is showing differently, okay, so what we showing, showing here. It's saying, this is, this is, uh, this day, ye out of the month of B. We wanna find out what that is. So we got, we got Abel. We have a bee. Now, what I want you guys to do, I want you to look in these, these, these couple of areas. And what we're gonna do here, let me click on the, on the whole verse here. And what we wanna find out is, in, in this area here, it says. This day came out of the month of B. So what I want you to do, I want you to read. Just this chapter thirteen. And when we get to Abel, I want you to read just that chapter in Abel. And I want y'all to try to get an understanding exactly about what's going on, how they are working. And then we gonna see the spiritual side of it, to where we gonna break it all down, and we gonna find out what those are. Now, what gonna happen, uh, next week, after we do that, after that happens. What we gonna do, let me pour this, let me pour this other part up here. Cause after we do that, I'm gonna go through about five to six words. We gonna get the spiritual understanding, we gonna get the carnal understanding on both. And then we gonna get them on both on here, and then we gonna get it on the other five. On top of that, what's gonna happen is, I'm gonna tie you to all the scriptures to where you can understand it. But there's a couple of scriptures I'm gonna leave out of there to where you can still get the understanding, those are the ones I'm gonna have you to put with it. So you gonna get the spiritual meaning and the celestial principles behind it. And I'm gonna give you the verses to it, to where we gonna completely understand them, but then I'm gonna leave, I'm gonna leave out a verse, or two verses out of there. That will give you the understanding, and I'm gonna need you guys to put those verses to it. All right? Do everybody understand what's going on? Cause we can, we can do, we can run, we can run a couple of them if you want. Huh, okay, cause, um, I tell you what, we, we can, um. Huh? Okay. Cause um, I tell you what, we, we can um. We can run a, a famous one right now. Let's go here, we're gonna look at uh, Matthew. Matthew five twenty-six, Matthew five twenty-six. Can everybody see what I'm pulling up? Okay, so we're gonna go to Matthew five twenty-six. Now. It's saying one thing, so five twenty-six, it says, and I barely, I say unto thee. Thou shall by no means come out thence. Till thou hast paid the uttermost partings. So what is this, what is this, what is this actually saying? We want to find out what it's saying. Now, I'm gonna show you what it's saying right up here. Can anybody tell me what that is? Do you know that's what, do you know that verse is telling you the same thing? It's saying, it's saying the identical thing. And what we're gonna do, we're gonna, we're gonna look at some of these to where we can look at them, to where we can understand them. And see, we can also go into Revelations um. Let me just get over there. Let me just get over there to where we can get it. Three, 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 okay. It says, three fourteen. And unto the angel of the church of Lysodotians, write these things saith a man. The faithful and true witness, the beginning of the creation of God. Now, you see right here where it says, things saith a man? Then it continue to go. But the problem with most people have, we're gonna put a man in here. And I'm gonna put a search in there, and I want to find it. Damn, I didn't know how to do it this way. Okay, same thing like this with numbers. We'll go to numbers. And we'll go down to twenty-two, show you something. Twenty-two, you see it saying, most times you're gonna see in the Bible, it's gonna always be at the end. So, it's saying, in the waters call us the curve, the curse shall go until thy bowels. To make thy bellies to swell, and thy thigh to rot. And the woman shall say, amen, amen. Now, do people know why they say amen? Cause I'm gonna share it with you guys. See, I should pop this on the adults, but I should, but I'm gonna share it with you guys, because you need to know exactly what it was saying. So this is why it says right here, in um, in um, Matthew, why it's talking about this. And I'm gonna show you, it says, and unto the angel of the church of Lysodotia, write, these things. Saith the a man. Anybody want to take a stab at that? With the, why it says a man and what do a man mean? Anybody want to take a stab at it? Nobody? Well, brother Devon, I'm gonna have to put you on the spot, my brother. You wanna just take a stab at it? What do you think a man mean?
I'm gonna think amen means. Can I redo it again?
Yes, yeah, fourteen, it says, I'll read for you, it says. And unto the angel of the church of Lysodotia's, write, these things saith the a man, the a man. The faithful and true witness, the beginning of the creation of God. Don't worry, if you get it wrong, don't even worry about it. We just, we just want to make sure we're gonna understand what it means, cause I'm gonna give you that, I'm gonna give you what it means anyway. Okay, he says the title, okay. Anybody else? Uh, I see, I see, I see all the little ricks. Uh, any of the ricks want to take a stab at it? What do you think it mean? Yeah, one sec, one second, the Robinsons, one second, I'm gonna come to you. What do you think it mean? Just tell me what you think a man means. Just take a stab at it. Think about it, think about it. What do you think it mean? Okay, uh, I had the Robinsons, when I was eager to say something, so I'm gonna go to the Robinsons. And Vincent Robinson, can you tell me what you think it means? What do you think a man means? What do you think it mean?
What do you think the a man means?
Okay. So you said mean the most high, okay, hold it right there. We're gonna, we're gonna go to another one. I see uh, 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 this is Sister Samuel. I need you to tell me what you think that mean.
Um, so when it says the faithful and true witness, the beginning of the creation of God. I believe means Christ Jesus himself, which I feel like that means amen.
Yeah, so amen, so amen, we want to know exactly what amen is.
I feel like a man means one, and I feel like Christ Jesus himself is one.
Okay. Okay. Alright, okay. That, 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 that's a good shot too, I'm, I'll tell you that right now. I want to see, now I'm gonna go to uh. Uh, Sister Kim, what do you think?
I think it means like. I think it means like, um. Um, like. Like, just like the beginning of time.
Um, Brother Elder?
Yeah.
Uh, I think it means, um, not like as a title, but like.
Yeah.
Like it normally, I think it means, uh, so, uh, let it be.
Yeah, okay, okay, that's, that's, yeah, but let, let, we're gonna let everybody finish out before we cut them off. They finish out. Okay, uh, Sister, Sister Kiki, what do you, what do you think it mean? Okay.
The say, things saith the a man.
Yeah.
Comma, the faithful and the true witness, the begin of the creation of God.
Okay, I'm gonna tell you. You are, you're a good thinker. I, I give you your credit there. You, 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 you honing around in on it. Okay, but, but, but hold that one. Let's go, let's go to uh, brother, let's go to Brother Robinson. What do you think? What do you think, my brother? I need him to unmute. Yeah, yeah, Brother Robinson, I need you to unmute. Tell me what you think. Tell me, tell me what you think a man mean. Yeah, it's fourteen. What do you think, my brother? Yeah. Alright, Brother Richardson, what do you think? It mean what?
Thank you.
Okay, alright, so he thinks it mean thank you. I think we have a couple of other ones in here, let me find them. Cause there's some I know I've seen them, but now I don't see them. Oh, there we go, she got her hand up, Sister Morton, go ahead. What do you think it mean?
So or so be it.
It what?
So or so be it.
Boy, I'm gonna tell you something, you kids is, you kids are pretty dangerous. One danced around it, I think she had it dead on, I'm gonna go to her. And, and it said, if you saying it so be it. I want you to hold your thoughts, Sister Morton. I want you to hold that thought. And I, and I want to go back to uh, I want to go back to uh, I believe it was Sister Kim. Sister Kim or Sister Kiki? Sister Kiki. I think it was Sister Kim. No, it must've been Sister Kiki, I see it in me. Now, you said, you said, what, what, what was it, Sister Kim?
I said, uh, the faithful and the true witness.
Okay, so. Now. What made you think that?
Because I remember like, I think they're supposed to like a comma and then tell you the meaning of what it's supposed to be, and I just thought that.
Okay, well, I'm gonna tell you. Kiki is dead on, is dead on track. And that's why I went here, because if you look at it, it tells you, it says a man, the faithful and true witness. So what it mean is confirming the truth. That's all it was saying. Most people say amen, and thinking that's the finishing of the verse, and it's not. You just confirming what was being said is true. That's why you say amen. It's confirming the truth. That's all it is. So when you have people pray and they have sit there, they, uh, amen, they think they finishing off it, they think they finishing it off. And it actually confirming the truth that's being said, especially when you see it from the Bible. So if you see somebody reading their Bible, they say amen, amen of that, they confirming the truth. That's all it's saying. It's not saying nothing else. You confirming what, what they, what they read is true. And it's true to the Bible. So, very good, very good, very good, Sister Kiki. So. So, so we gonna, we gonna look at another one, and this is how you start getting it to where you understanding what they are. Now, this is gonna be a little bit more of a tricky one, which uh, which we're gonna get into. And, but I, but I want you to understand what, what some of these words are, so we're gonna hone around in, and like in days for a minute. And um, I want to get to it. Let me see. Cause this one is a little bit more different. And we're gonna go right to, I see, I see me pulling it up, and y'all see the word that I'm pulling up. And can anybody tell me what do that word mean? Okay, I see Brother.
Uh, it means mankind.
Okay, that took all the fun out of that. So that's what it actually means. So that moved all the fun out of that one, let's move forward. Let's grab another one, because that's exactly what that mean. And, and where you, and where you break that down at, you can do it in two places. We're gonna go to one, it's in five. And uh. Right here, in five two, and then I'm gonna show you where he actually did it. So you look at five two, it says, male and female created he them, them. He made two of them, and blessed them. He's talking about them both, and called their names what?
Adam.
Let's, he cleared it right there. So the other part that you're used, you use, you use Genesis. One and twenty-seven, if I'm making sure I'm correct. And he's telling you right here. So God created man in his own image, in the image God created, he him. Male and female created, he them. Genesis five two, and he called their names Adam. That's your precept to that. So you nail that to the cross. Beautiful, and this, and this is literally how it should be going. To where you guys should be able to nail this stuff down, to where you're gonna get it automatically. Yeah, so, so when you see Adam carnally talking to somebody, you know. You, you say, well, Adam, well, yeah, you talking about this man, but spiritually, you already know what it actually is. Adam is just talking about mankind. But most people are not gonna understand what you're saying when you say it. You're gonna have to start explaining it. Actually, I was gonna use this one, but we're gonna use this other one. And I want to show you what this actually means. To get a better, to get the better understanding of what that is. And we're gonna look at this one here. A X E. We want to understand what ax mean. We're gonna go to ax, I would need to find it, I don't know why this does it that way, I need to find something else to do it, but we'll go to Deuteronomy. And Deuteronomy says, as, as when man goes into the wood with his neighbor. Took Hugh wood, and his hands uh, fetcheth a stroke with the axe. Do anybody know what a axe actually signifies? Anybody want to take a shot at it? Anybody want to take a shot at what do an axe mean? Okay.
Um, I think it's like a blade?
Blade? Okay, but what do an axe, so what we want to do, we want to look at behind the word, and how do an axe work? And what do an axe do? Cause it's telling you right there what it does. Yes.
It all cuts.
Mm-hmm, it, it cuts, but what is it cutting? What is it cutting?
It's cutting a tree.
So, so now, let's y'all start honing in on this. Cause some of you guys gonna start honing in. Then I'm gonna come to you, I'm gonna come to you, Sister Morton, one second. Come to you. So as we going to it. Now, you already explained it earlier, what spiritually is a tree? So if it is people, now what is this axe doing? Okay, so they using something, so now I'm gonna go to Sister Morton, and I want to hear what Sister Morton has to say, so you tell me. What is the axe, Sister Morton?
Like, it cuts down wicked people?
Okay, you, you right in it, but we just need to change it up a little bit. You, but you saying, you saying correctly what it, but we need to change what it's doing. We need to change basically how you formulating that word. You, you guys, boy, you guys, I'm talking about, you guys are actually all over it. Uh, Sister Samuel?
Um, I believe it means separation of people, like it's separating you. From your family, like from its roots.
Yeah, I'm gonna tell you something, you guys are giving beautiful answers, cause I'm gonna tell you, you're right in there. And one sister actually honed in on it. But it signifies where man has using his own intelligence. So what he's doing, he's cutting down. Intelligence to come up with his own thought patterns. This is, that's what, that's what the axe actually represents. We're gonna see some of this, and we're gonna, we're gonna look at one of them right now. And this is, this is, this is what, this is what happens. Let's, let's go to Jeremiah. We're gonna go to Jeremiah ten, uh, one second, I went too far. And you'll see, and you actually see this quite a bit in scripture as you go through it a lot of times. But we're gonna go to one, we're gonna go to one where men like to use their own thought patterns. And, and that's why I say, all you guys. And, and that's why I say, all you guys are giving good answers. Very good answers, but with those answers, what we gonna do, we gonna tie some scripture to it, and we gonna get some understanding there. So we gonna look at Jeremiah ten in verse three, it says, for the custom of the people are vain. So we do know it's cutting down people, because it's cutting down trees, as what Brother White said earlier. And then, well, we had one sister, I think it was Sister Kenesha, where she was talking about, how, um, that was you said that, Sister Kenesha? It was you or Sister Kim, one of you guys.
That way.
Yeah, as far as, um, it was representing, what it was representing, uh, far as the ax. But, but when you start talking about cutting down people who has the intelligence or the knowledge of the most high, is what they do. And this is what this is saying, so it's saying for the custom of the people, it's not saying people are God, custom of the people are vain, for one that cut a tree out of a forest. The work of the hands of the workman with an ax, it's telling you exactly what they're doing. So as it gets into it, it lets you know what it does. And most time when they using that ax, they normally cutting down trees that has great wisdom. So you talking about cutting down people who have great wisdom. Are y'all, are y'all following that? Okay, cause if anybody need more explanation, we can go way deeper into this. Okay. So we wanna understand all the time, this, this is what axes represent. It normally wanna cut down knowledge from people to, to, to install their own intelligence, which you can find many other intelligence, which you can go into Matthew 1:42, where the king told people, they gonna all become one people, and go away from all your laws, and you gonna come under my laws. This is some of the stuff that they do, this is what they do. And then what they do, they're confirming, amen, they confirm that as a truth. Once it's confirmed as a truth, they make that solid, and then if you break it, they, they, they would do that by death. That's normally what happens. Now, we gonna look at, uh, another one, uh, I thought we were gonna do, um, this should be, let me see, I wonder, you, you guys should be able to do that one also. Let me see, I believe, I believe you guys can get this one, I really do. So I would think I might go ahead and run with this one. I take what, we gonna, we gonna run with this one, cause I believe you guys can actually get it. We gonna look at after, this'll be our last word, we gonna look at, we gonna look at after. And we gonna look at Genesis one and eleven, it says, and God said, let the earth bring forth grass, the herbs yielding seeds, and the fruit trees yielding fruit after his kind, after. Do anybody know what after mean in this, what it's talking about, because this is talking strictly celestial and not terrestrial, it's not talking nowhere carnal. So, we need to understand what do after his kind, or after what do after mean? Anybody wanna take a stab at? Who, what you say?
Is it the same?
Is it the same?
Yeah.
Is the same as saying, um, so after, you saying it's the same?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, you, you, you close around there, you, you close around it, you, you close around, I, I give you credit, you close around there. So, so we have Sister, we have Sister Robertson giving us a strong lead out. She gave us a strong lead out. Cause she, she honing, she honing directly, she saying, she saying it's one of the same. She is, she's giving you a strong lead after it. I'm talking, she giving us a strong lead, we should, we should be able to hone in on this now, cause she gave you a seriously strong lead on that. How old are you, Sister Robertson?
Huh?
How, how, how old is she?
Oh, that's, that's my son, Ena. He's six.
Son, Ena, oh, okay.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, his voice was different, I'm sorry. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, he still got some to do.
Yeah, okay, yeah, he, well, he gave us a strong lead out, you guys. I'm done, so, so we should be able to tie into this. Cause he, cause he saying, he saying it's one of the same. Is that, is that, is that what you saying, Brother Robertson, is that what you saying? Cause I'm, I just wanna make sure I'm quoting you correctly.
He saying that it's the same? He's asking you.
Is that what he said, that's yes or no, I, I'm trying to just make sure.
Yes.
Okay, so, okay, so he saying it's one of the same, so we have Sister Morton, we gonna go with her, wha, wha, what she got? Cause, cause Brother, Brother Robertson came, he's coming out, and he's, he's literally leading us right to it.
More like simulant?
Yeah, yeah, he's, he's saying, he's saying, that's what he's saying, it's simulant.
Brother Elder?
Yes.
I think it will be unto.
Unto? Okay. Yeah. Unto, yeah, see, unto, yeah? You, you, yeah, you got, I'm talking about y'all are so right up on it, and, um, and what we gonna do, I'm gonna take one more, cause literally you guys are actually right at it. You guys are right at it. Anybody else, before we just go ahead, because literally, you got Brother Robertson, he, he came out, and then we had the other brother come out, so you, you guys are nailing it to the cross. So, so anybody else wanna give a shot? Okay, well, Sister Morton? Will Sister Morton be the last one?
Same nation?
What?
Same nation.
Same nation? Actually, that's, that's good. What we wanna do, let's go to Genesis, we gonna go to Genesis. Well, we gonna look at a couple of places where, where, where we gonna hone in on it. Genesis sixteen thirteen, and we gonna, we gonna hone in on this. Genesis sixteen thirteen. We gonna look at a couple of things. In Genesis sixteen thirteen, it says, and she named, and, uh, and she called the name of Yahweh that spake unto her, thou God seest me, for she said, have I also here looked after him that seest me. Wherefore? The whale was called Beer La Har, uh, Ria. Behold, it is between Kaddish and Berey. Now, if you look up, up with, if you look up in there, it says, I also looked after him that seest me. See, these is start giving you some keys, and I'm going into that complex side because I want you to see something else. So we need to look at the complex to start breaking that down. Because what they said, they talking about, is still talking about, talking about one of the same. This is what Brother Robertson said, this talking about one of the same. Same as everybody's still saying, one of the same kind. Exactly what it is, because when you look at this verse right here in Genesis one eleven, it says, yielding seed and fruit, yielding fruit after his kind, after his kind, one of the same. Now, I don't know how old Brother Robertson is. But.
I'm six years old.
Yeah, they, they, and that let you know they're a kid, cause they gonna let you know they getting ready to turn another age. Cause you know, once we older, we'll sit there, we'll say we thirty, and we will stay at thirty until the last day that that thirty had to hit thirty-one.
Yeah.
So, so he let you know, he getting ready to be seven, so, so he ain't gonna be staying at six. But the main thing, he's, but the main thing that they were saying is they honing in on after, so they saying it's gonna be like, it's gonna be one of the same. And that's actually what after means. That's what it's saying in the spiritual side. Now, we're gonna, now I'm gonna show you a couple of scriptures which we gonna tie into, and make it, and make it, uh, be, be in the same place, and, uh, actually, let me find you one of the best ones. And follow this, no, we don't want that one. This other one. To make it more clear for the, uh, kids. Cause you guys are actually doing very, they actually very good. Very, very good. Yeah. Not that one, I'm trying to find one more for that you guys are, are clearly get. Yeah, and let's all go to, let's go to Mark eight. Mark chapter eight. We gonna go to verse thirty-four. And we gonna get the complete understanding of after. In Mark eight and thirty-four, it says, and when he had called the people unto him with his disciples also, so we know here, he called a lot of people, but his disciples had to come with him, so all twelve of them came. And he said unto them, whosoever will come after. You see, it's talking about just like him. You see that? Do everybody see what that, what's happening there? He said, after me. So he telling, if you gotta come, you gotta come the same way I'm going. If you not gonna come the same way just like I'm doing, we gonna have a problem. And that's why he said, let him deny himself, that's why, when that spirit rests upon you, that's why you have to kill off that flesh and let your spirit lead you, the same as Yahweh shai did. And he says what? Let him take up his cross and follow me. Why? Because you have to come after him, just like him. Exactly what Brother Robertson started right out the gate saying. Do everybody see that? Now. We gonna, we gonna, we gonna pause here, cause I got about ten minutes. And, um, I do wanna say, is actually still very, very shocking to where, as I say, with these kids, to which, how you guys can quickly understand things, and literally, you know, spiritually, you, you, you get it very quick. That's, that's the, that's the best part I like. But, um, but just remember, when you see after, you wanna know it's talking about the same thing. Most people say, well, after this happened, that happens. That's not mainly how the Bible sees it. You gotta come just like something. After his kind, he's coming just like something else, that's why he saying, so whosoever wanna be like him, you have to come just like how he's doing it as you seeing this in Mark. Do everybody see that?
Yes, elder.
Okay, so, what we wanna do, do we have any questions, or is everybody good? But once we convene next week, we gonna go through about five or six of these words, and then I'm gonna have you, I'm gonna show you the relations to them, but then I'm gonna have you guys to show me, to come back with your homework, to ask you, you gonna tie those, to, to those words, to the verses that you have found spiritually. I'm not gonna look for them carnally, I want them spiritually, but if someone wanna put it carnally to where the other people, you more than welcome to do so. But do we have any questions?
One question, elder, um, our iPad guy, when you were going through what the amen meant, and we didn't hear it.
Oh, what the amen meant, is, is, is confirming the truth.
Okay.
That's what it mean, it confirms the truth.
Okay, you got thirty-nine?
Yeah, actually, uh, uh, Sister Kiki nailed it, nailed it completely down. She went straight to it. So that's why, that's why I say, that's why I say, kids gonna shock you a little bit more, because they not, they not, they not defiled like we was, so they gonna understand a lot more stuff, same as, um, how we had Brother Devon, a lot of the stuff, he, he said, he don't even see it in a carnal way. It's pretty much when I read my Bible, I don't read in a carnal sense. I see it on the flip side, I look behind the words on everything. So that, that's, that's literally the best way to see the Bible, cause now, then what it does, um, as we start doing some more, we get into precepting later with them, it gonna probably become very simple to him.
Okay.
And that's the main thing, because if he, if he gets this, this way, which he did, and he did it on his own, precepting gonna be, it gonna be kinda straightforward to him, cause precepting for me was not hard. Yeah, it was not hard. My, 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 my biggest, my biggest hurdle was, was trying to figure out what some of those words meant. But then, once I understood what they mean, precepting is, is, I'm going, is like a walk in the park. And that's probably, and so, he's probably gonna be the same way.
Ooh, I hope so.
Yeah, so, yeah, cause I'm, cause if he, cause if I see that he, if, if I see that it is real simple for him, I'm gonna remove him out of this class, and I'm gonna put him in the adult class. Even though he's ten years old, cause it wouldn't make no sense. Yeah, cause it'd be, it'd be useless for him. So, yeah, cause it probably still might won't even be that challenging for him, even over there. Cause if you know, if you understand what he's doing right now, yeah, you know, especially even like with, with his brother, cause his brother is right, right, right along with him. And then what happens there, it becomes to where one gonna help the other, and they gonna pull each other, and then, then you have two of them doing the same thing. So, those are things that can come up, so then you have both of them, who will pull up, and then we just have to move them out. And then we move them out, and they just go into this adult class. Pretty much what gonna happen, so, that's what happens. You know, so then I don't look at, at that point then, I don't look at age.
Yeah.
So, only, only, the only way I get a leniency to where, if, uh, homework's done, I do know that they have to do homework for class at school, they take care of that, they just not gonna be leaned on, or it's taking care of the work for us here. But if they have the time to where they can do it, as far as the learning sessions, no, they gonna be more than open to it. That's basically how it works. So, we make sure they have to take care of the carnal side first, cause that, that's the requirements to make sure they can graduate, to get, you know, all their diplomas to go where they need to go. And then, but to, but to understand the word of God, you know, they gonna always understand it, so they, they can always be fed. So. Okay. Yeah, so, um, yeah, so do we have any other, do we have anybody with questions, any questions?
Brother Elder?
Yes. Yeah.
Sorry, why are black people, white people?
Why are?
Israelites, God chosen people?
Why are they God chosen people? I can show you that, uh, one second, let me pour this. One, Moses even asked that same question. One second, let me see. Let me pour that real quick, one second. I gotta pour that one, one second, let's pour that up. Let me pour it, one second. Because what happened is, um, they was, they was just chosen, but then Moses clearly asked him. Not that one I want, I was a certain one I want. It's a certain verse I want, to make sure it's clear. So give one second. One second. That's not the one I want, one second. Yes, to be his people. Cuz, cuz what happened, they, when he took him out, but I'm trying to get this, one second as we go, cuz it's a certain verse that actually pinpoints that. Yeah. Let me pour this. Yeah, cuz most of the one I'm pulling up right now is one to destroy, but that's not the ones I want. Where is this? Moses. Let me see. I think it's in this one, but let me make sure. That we be second, one second. Cuz if not, it's a, it's a certain verse I want, I can show you where he asked them, but it's a certain verse I want, so that's why I wanted. The atonement, that's not the one. And I think this is why. God. Yeah. Okay, I think I've found it, one second, cuz I wanted, I wanted to find a particular spot. Let me make sure that's it. Yes, not the one. Cuz this right, yes. Well, I tell you what, let me find this one, while I'm doing that, let me show you this other one, where he asked him um, where he actually chose them, but I wanna show you this other part where he actually selected them, one second. Let's just move here. I wish this thing was faster here. Let's go right here. That's not the one. I'm just having a few little, I'm trying to get this straightened out on my computer too, so I'm just trying to make sure. So one second, why, I don't know why I keep doing this. Come on. Who this gonna make me mad? This, well, first, let's go over here, cuz this gonna actually make me upset. Let's go, let's go to Exodus nineteen, let's go to Exodus, yeah, let me to this thing, yeah, let me, let me, let me still try to get it up. Let me still try to, one second, if I can get this up. Shoots, if I can. Let me see. This is finna, it actually make me, Heidi. Can you? I don't even know if, can you, can you see my screen? Okay, you can see it? Oh boy, yeah, I'm sorry, this, this next one finna drive me, it's gonna drive me crazy, but it, okay, let's go, let's go over here. And we'll see, we could start actually at um, we'll start at verse three, let's go to verse three. It says, "And Moses went up to God, and Yahweh called unto, called, called unto him out of the mountain, saying, 'If thou should say to the house of Jacob, and tell the children of Israel.'" So he's letting you know, one is Jacob, two, all of Israel, that's all he was saying. He said, "Ye have seen what I did unto the Egyptians," cuz what he, all this stuff that they did to the Egyptians, he letting, he letting Moses know, and just reminding him all the stuff he done. And he said, "I'll bear you on the eagle's wings." Actually, I shouldn't have showed this verse, cuz this actually shows some, some words that I want, but that's, okay. Shouldn't have showed this verse, but that's okay. It said, "Brought, and brought you unto myself." "Why? Now therefore," this is the key right here, how he chose us. "If ye obey my voice indeed." He's telling you clearly, "If you obey my voice, this is the most high speaking. And keep my covenant." He's telling you clearly. "Then, only then, ye shall be a peculiar treasure unto me above all people, for all the earth is mine." He's clearly telling you, "Only then, you'll become his people." So as you've probably seen some of my teaching, even though the Israel, all is not really Israel. That's why he said, that's why they says this, because you have some people gonna do what? They not gonna do this. But he says, "If, if you obey his voice." You have some people not gonna do it. You see that? So, that's what's happening. So now, we're gonna go back to we're gonna see here, it says, "And ye shall be unto me a kingdom, a priest, in a, in a holy nation. These are the words which thou shalt speak unto the children of Israel." Now, here we go, "And Moses came and called the elders of the people, and laid before their faces all these words which the Lord commanded him." You see that?
Yes, sir.
So, he had to relay everything that the Most High told him to all the people. And then he goes on to say, "And all the people answered together, and said, 'All that the Lord has spoken, thou we will do.'" That's how we got selected, cuz all the thing that he said, we will do, and Moses returned the words of the people to the Lord. So right then, once he returned those to the Lord, we became married to him.
Yes, sir, thank you, on this order.
Yeah, so once we became married to him, that's why we can go into Deuteronomy twenty-eight, when we don't do, where he tells us what to do, we have a problem.
Yes, sir.
So that's what happens. So this is why it's really important to where we know Malachi three and six, actually, we'll go right there to it, so this is, this is why so, this is why the Bible is so straightforward, and most people don't wanna, don't wanna look at it that way. Straightforward. When you go right here, at Malachi three and six, it says what? "For I am the Lord, I change not. Therefore, ye sons of Jacob," which we just seen, it was Jacob, Israel, "ye are not consumed."
Yes, sir.
He don't change. So if he don't change, what are you saying? He's saying what? We have to obey something, we have to obey his voice.
Yes, sir.
Whatever he says, we obey. That's why he says this. Any other questions?
Um, Brother Elder?
Yeah.
The verse that you just now gave me, can I um, substitute the words?
Yeah, you can actually, so you can clearly substitute the words, you can clearly substitute those. These, these actually can easily be, be substituted, easily.
Yes, sir.
And seeing a, a lot of times, I don't know if you look at all my teaching, a lot of times, what I actually do, I use more precepts in a lot of my teachings, because I have to show you, most people the longer route, besides just going through this, saying this, or this, and that, because then you have a lot of people who don't understand the spiritual side, you have to explain it. So that's why I do that. That's why you see a lot of time, I have a lot of scriptures, a lot of precepts in my, in my teachings. Because of that, because I have to break this down, and show them the carnal side, what they see, and slowly enter them into the spiritual side on what it's actually saying. That's why I do that.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Mm-hmm, any other questions?
Do we have, um, hard talk tonight?
Actually, what I want you to do is read on Abel, where I took you. And I had another word I did take you through, I just want you to read and understand what Abel was saying. And we wanted to get the understanding on Abel, cuz I didn't, I didn't go through to understand on Abel. I went through, I went through on everybody else, but I didn't go through on Abel, and I didn't do another, and I actually gotta go through, cuz I actually, I did one, I wasn't supposed, but I tell you what, in Abib.
Brother Elder?
Yes.
What verse do you read for Abel?
For Abel, I want you to go to Genesis four, and I want you to read that chapter on there. Read that one chapter, get an understanding on what Abel is, and on Abib, I want you to understand what Abib mean, I'm gonna go back to Abib. Where we can understand what Abib is actually talking about. And I want you just to read the chapter of Abib. And we can look at, you can, this plain place where you can look at it at, you see that? But we can go to Exodus thirteen and four, and it says, "The day came, the day came ye out of the month Abib." And just what, you wanna understand just really what Abib mean, and then what we're gonna do, once you understand what it mean, we'll find out, what a few of you guys think about it. What you think about it, and how you seeing it, based on that chapter that you reading, cuz you'll see, Abib, as you see in here, you see in Exodus twenty-three, you, somebody might wanna, might gonna read Exodus twenty-three, you can go see it in Exodus thirty-four. But the key thing is, you wanna catch it in the first mentions, the first time that you see a B mentioned, is really the chapter that you wanna read. You don't have to read like chapter thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, you say in thirteen, read chapter thirteen one, to the end of that chapter. But then, you might go back and read it again, so say like we're here, what we'll do. Say like it starts at thirteen four, so you see right here, it starts off saying, in the, in, and it says, "And Yahweh spoke unto Moses, saying." So we know, so we know, right from this point on, the Most High is gonna start talking. That's what it says, "Sanctified unto me all firstborn, whosoever opened up the womb." Now, it says, "Whosoever opening up the womb," what is he saying here? Cuz he, this is actually celestial talk. It's not telling you terrestrial talk. So we need to know what that mean. So once you understand what that mean, you understand what other things mean, and then later on, we'll find out what that means, so this is not homework for you, but I just want you to read this. But this is actually saying something else. It says, "Among the children of Israel brought both, both man and a beast, it is mine." He's letting you know, whoever opened up this womb, whoever opened it up something, among the children of Israel, it belongs to him. He's being point blank on this. Then it goes on saying, it says, "And Moses, and Moses said unto the people," so now we know, right here in verse two, the Most High stopped talking. Now Moses getting ready to talk, and he says, "Remember this day, in which ye came out of Egypt, out of the house of bondage." He's letting you know exactly what it is. So we, now we do know, when we look at Egypt, Egypt is not talking about, in the Bible, always just Egypt being a good thing. Egypt means, the Bible meaning of, of Egypt means the house of bondage. That's exactly what Egypt means. So now, and then it says, "For by the strength of the hand I have brought you out of the place, there shall no uh, leavened bread be eaten." So now he's telling you, can no leavened bread be eaten, so anything with leaven in it cannot be eaten, especially bread. Why? Because what do bread mean? Bread is meat. What is meat? It's spiritual, that's telling you exactly what it is. So it cannot be, it cannot be infused with sin, because leaven equals sin. Unleavened is not sin, leavened is sin. And then he says what? "The day ye came out in the month of when? Of Abib." So we need to find out, what do Abib mean and why he saying Abib? This is what we're gonna find out. So as you read this, you can find out what's going on, and then what I want you guys to do, just, and it goes down, it has twenty, it has twenty-two verses. Might take you guys five, six minutes to read it. And you're done. But what I want you to do is think on it, meditate on it, and understand what it's saying. Let me bring them in, one second, real quick. Uh, one second. Let me see. One second, you guys. So we can get her back in, cuz I guess she was doing something, so we had to get one person back in. But, but what we wanna do is understand. Let me see, did she get in? Did she get back in? Let me send a couple of more, make sure she got in. Well, she has the thing, so I know she has it, so. I don't know if she's coming in on that or not. But, but what we wanna do is understand what Abib actually means. We gotta understand what it means. We need to, um, when you look at it. The same thing, what I want you to do, is see, see the same word. You look at it, understand how he's making that word, that word function. Because once we understand how he's, how he's making this word function, is where we're gonna find out what Abib actually mean. So, when we look at Abib, look at how he's functioning in that word. It says, and they came out in the month of Abib. So we need to understand how he's making that function. But then, the best part of it is, from verse five on down, is telling you how that word functions. So now you're gonna see how Abib actually works. This is your key. And then, once you understand how it works, think on it. Think on it for a while, see do it make sense. And then, once you see, if it started making sense to you, and then you start applying it to the way that you see that it makes sense, and you work it. And now you're gonna start understanding what Abib actually is saying. And then, once you tell me what you think, we'll get everybody, what they saying, what they thinking me. Then from that point, then what we'll start doing, we'll start breaking that down, and we're gonna find out exactly what it mean. But, I can almost guarantee you, I'm pretty sure you guys gonna get it. Before I even even tell you what it mean, I'm pretty sure you guys gonna get it. So I just need to, you know, you guys read it, the younger, younger ones. I need the parents with the younger ones, to read that to them. To, and just read it to them, you know, real slow, and, and main thing, they wanna understand what Abib mean. And then, as it says, in that, this day ye came out of the month of Abib, and it shall be when Yahweh should bring thee into the land of the Canaanites, the Hittites, and the Amorites, the Hivites, and the Javites, when ye swear unto the thy fathers to give thee a land flowing with milk and honey, that thou should keep this service in this month. He's telling you how, he's telling you how it actually functions. That's what we wanna understand. So, just make sure you go through, understand how that's functioning. Once you understand how it's functioning, I guarantee you, you know what, you know what Abib mean, not just in a carnal sense, you'll know what it means in the spiritual sense, because he tells you in the spiritual sense, even what, what is going on, what was going on up here. Because the spiritual sense, he's giving it to you, sanctify, sanctify unto me. What do sanctify means? Do anybody know what sanctifying means? And, and this, and this, and this little Robinson? This is a little dangerous six-year-old too. Because literally, that's what it means. So, he's telling you, to set apart unto him, all the firstborn. Period. That's what he's saying. So when he says sanctify, you can just say, and basically what it's saying, and it said, and Yahweh spoke unto Moses saying, set apart unto me all the firstborn. That's what he's actually saying. Sanctify is what most people see. Set apart is what he's saying spiritually. And then he say, unto me all the firstborn. Whosoever openeth the womb, what is the womb? Anybody? Anybody wanna take a stab at it? Anybody wanna take a stab at it? Because I'm gonna tell you, you guys, you guys are pretty sharp, so. This is why I'm going that, this extra little piece to where we finish this out, so once you read it. So, so what the womb also can be translated to. When you look at the womb, so how it should read, is whosoever openeth the matrix. Is what it's saying. That's what it's letting you know. Among, so whomsoever, so it's a whomsoever openeth the matrix among the children of Israel. Both man and beast, it belongs to him. This is what he's saying. So he's telling you all this spiritually, but watching verse three, and it says, and Moses said to the people, remember this day, in which ye came out of what? You can remove Egypt out of there, you just, just put bondage. You remember this day, you came out of bondage? You can drop that whole part out of the house of bondage, but you remember this day, when you came out of bondage? For what? For by the strength of the hand of Yahweh, what brought you out from this place? Which hand did he use? Do anybody know? Because he tells you all the time, what hands he uses. It's the right hand of the Most High. He tells you this, all the time. So, we wanna make sure that we keep remembering that, when you stand certain things, we wanna make sure we keep that in mind as we read. So when he's talking about, with it, with it, with his hand. Also, who is, who stands on the right hand of the Most High? Yahweh's side. That's where his power lays. So he's saying, and then, then he tells you what? There shall no leaven be eaten. What, he's saying, ain't no sin gonna be taken into this place. No sin knowledge, he do not want nowhere run, running around. This day, come ye out of the month of Abib. So, when did they come out of Egypt? He's telling you the month they came out of. He's telling you everything, right there. Spiritually, what happened?
The month of Abib? Month of Abib.
Yep. And that actually is a month. And, and we're gonna go through, so that's why I want you to read it, and then you guys gonna tell me what you see. And then I want you to be able to tell me, when did that happen? Because just like I said, well, let me, let me switch the hats, for, for, for you guys group. Anything you wanna know about the Most High, is in the book. Only thing that's in, that's not, that you will not find in here, is when he's returning. That's in the power of the Most High, it tells you that. So, anything else you wanna know, he will answer it. See, and actually, make sure we clear on this, let's go to all, everybody, let's go to Acts. And we gonna find that out, right then, to where that answer, where that question then never have to come up. Let's go to Acts, first chapter. And we gonna go to verse six. Acts, the first chapter, and verse six. In Acts, the first chapter, verse six, it says, when they, when they, when they therefore were come together, they asked him saying, Lord, will thou at this time restore again the kingdom to Israel? Which, that's what he's supposed to do, when he come, he's gonna restore the kingdom back to Israel. And he says in verse seven, he said unto them, it is not for you to know the time or the season. That's not for us to know, when he's returning. He goes on more, which the Father had put in his own power. So, that's, that's something we should never be, be asking, because his son don't know, so how we gonna know? He's standing on the right hand side of the Father. We down here on earth. So, he don't know, so clearly, he's not gonna let us know. But anything else we wanna know, he lets us know. Anything that you wanna know about, he will share it with you. He has no problem in doing that. So the same thing, so the same thing, when people say, when did, when did, when did Israel come out from, from Egypt? You can actually find out. Because it's in, it's in the scriptures. So, so with that, uh, we don't have no more questions, we're gonna go ahead, and we're gonna close out. And then, you guys have the two ones that I wanna go through, we're gonna look at Abib. And we are looking at the other word is, is, um, is, is the which one? Is Abel. I wanna know what those two, what those two mean spiritually. We not gonna do too much carnal stuff while we over here. Because most of the stuff I'm gonna be doing over here spiritually, because we're gonna look at the spiritual side and the carnal side. We're gonna always hone in on. So those are the ones we're gonna wanna know. So, um, we don't have no more questions, we're gonna, we're gonna move forward, and then we're gonna convene this and pick it up next week. So is everybody good? Okay, so it looks like everybody good. So, so the same thing, Devin, I need to get, uh, have your father get with me, I need to get your address, to get that out to you. And, um, and the same thing, is, uh, everybody, we have many gifts gonna be going out. And, just like that alone, you know, put effort in, effort comes out of it. And also, those are things to where you don't look to be rewarded on, on, on every time you do something. But, the main thing is, it gives you a little bit more to where you can see, to, um, encouragement in having, especially for the young ones. And the main thing, what we also do, we don't, never want them to be looking at other children, to where children look at, uh, the heathen times, which gets into those holidays, which in Christmas and all that, where something is clearly against scripture, to where it gets to these times, where you don't have to even sit there, and it's, because one thing is just another thing. And as many of us, as we start getting older, and to start getting into these holidays, and many of us start going into temporary workforce, working part-time, those would be some of the best days to work. And I can tell you that right now, because that's where most places will pay you double time, some will pay triple time, especially in America. I don't, I'm not sure how they might do it in other countries, but I do know here, we will pay double, maybe we'll pay triple. And I will not have a problem doing it, because it's nothing but another day. And actually, most time, it's. With that, I, I thank everybody for, for joining in, all the parents that joined in. And we have a lot of people who watched it, and, and, and I really appreciate each and every one of you guys. So, I guess next week, um, we'll be going through with the same people, we're gonna get some understanding, and we'll continue, we're gonna try to have a few more, a few more kids in here. And to get in here, but other than that, I think you guys did a beautiful job. Do we have any parents might wanna say anything before we close out, or we good? Or not just?
I wanted to say something.
Yes.
That, um, it was very good, and I learned from each and every one of the kids.
Yeah. Yeah.
Every one of them. I want, I just wanted to say thank you.
Okay. Yeah, anybody else?
Yes, I would like to tell the young ladies, they are beautiful, young ladies. And the guys, they are gorgeous young guys, and keep up the good work. I am so proud of you guys.
Boy, yeah, tell, I, I, I'm one hundred percent agree is with you, Sister, uh, Sister Arera.
Okay, shalom people.
Yes. Hello?
Yes.
I just wanted to tell the kids, they did a very good job.
Yeah. Yeah. Anybody else?
I would like to say that I'm very proud of the kids. And they, the job they did with the word meat was awesome.
Wasn't it?
Yes, it was.
Yeah.
Even when, um, Kiki did, her presentation made me get emotional a little bit. And especially with my daughter, daughter Kimberly. So I'm very proud of them, but my man Devin, wow.
Yeah, yeah. And I would tell you, you gonna see, it gonna always switch, because you gonna see where some of them are strongest points. It gonna switch from kid to kid, that's normally what happens. You'll see some kids gonna have real strong points, and there's some gonna be other places, but, but man, yeah, these kids is, um,
Yes.
If you know.
I'm, I'm very proud of Israel right now, the babies.
Yeah, because you gonna find out a lot, if you see, I can ask them certain questions, they're flipping automatic, they can, they know what it is automatically. So when I ask certain words, they just blurt it out, exactly what it is.
Wow.
One of them is six years old, wait, wait, let me correct it.
I saw him, I said, oh my God.
No, we gotta correct his age, six, ready to be seven.
Going on seven, yeah.
Well, he wanted, that, that be known.
Yes, and we, yes, and when he answered the question sanctify, I was like, wow.
Yeah, and, and he just spit it right out.
Yes.
Yeah, so, so, so we got him six, going on seven. We get that correct, because if not, he might get on his side, and they gonna get on us.
That's right.
Make sure we got all that correct.
Yes, but I enjoyed the lesson today, it was awesome.
Oh, she was, I had a ball.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we have anyone, anyone else, are we good?
Well, shalom family, Elder, I just wanted to share something with you about Devin. Ever since Elder showed, the, is it a tablet?
Yeah.
And you mentioned the tablet that you were gonna give it away, the first thing Devin said was, I'm a gift cat. And that, that was his theory, and he stuck to it. And just immediately, he said, yeah dad, should we give Elder the phone number? And I said, well, he didn't give it away. He goes, yeah dad, I got it, I got it. You know, so I didn't hear that part, but I'm happy for him.
Oh yeah, well, I need the address, because I need to know where to send it, because it's Devin's.
All right, well, I'll have Devin send it to you, Elder.
Yeah, okay, yeah, because it's his. Because he said it was his, and it is his. You know, he, 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 he really, he really, he really put in that effort, and the man, he, yeah, he, he did an outstanding job, I think, uh, yeah, I just, you know, I had to pause him a couple of times, because he, he, he literally shot me. You know, so, because I didn't think he would flip it, but he was flipping everything over, flip, uh, spiritually, which is, uh, really, really don't catch out of these kids, but, but yeah, it's really impressive. Then, you know, you get, you, then you get these little ones, just spitting out stuff, they don't even, they just spitting it out, yeah, sanctify, oh no, that means set apart, yeah, I'm six years old, no, six going on seven. Get that correct, because I don't need brother dude saying, now the kid told you it's going on seven. I don't need to get that. So, yeah, so, but, um, yes, yeah, so I love these kids that, you know, they, they're going up, but then as they understand the Bible, see, the more solid, the more solid you guys' foundation is, the more solid can nobody fool you. And I want, all I want you guys to do, is read the Bible. And, and main thing is, you will not have to be investing in some commentary, you won't have to be investing in some, some weird dictionary. You'll be able, be able to read this Bible, and know exactly what it's saying from beginning to the end, and can't nobody turn you from it. Once y'all get on the precept side of it, it gonna be a wrap at that point. And I'm talking about, can't nobody tell you anything, because you can show them all the precepts, everything. That's the best part. Yeah, so we have any other parents, or, or are we good?
Uh, I'm not a parent, um, I just wanna say, I, I had to leave. But, uh, I just came back in, so I missed.